Could I please ask everyone to rise and to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Gillespie, Councilman Wood, Councilman Argo, Councilman Miller, Councilman Renninger, Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Here.
Having a quorum being established, I hereby call this Prattville City Council meeting to order. We are ready to conduct business. Members of the council and ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the top of your agenda if you have a copy of tonight's agenda and let you know that our character trait of the month is hospitality, and that is cheerfully sharing food, shelter, or conversation to benefit others. Members of the council, you should have received your city council meeting minutes from November the 2nd, 2010. I hope you found those to be in good order, and if so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Renninger to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Fink. Any discussion, changes, additions, deletions about the minutes? Dr. Miller.
I really hate to do this, but I'm going to have to ask the council's patients in terms of I basically need a little more time to review the minutes. I am the one who's at fault here because I did not have time to review them since we got them, and I just ask your indulgence to please support me on that because I feel like I need to do that.
All right. Dr. Miller has made a motion that we hold the minutes until our first meeting in December, which is December the 7th. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Renninger. Any discussion on the motion to hold the minutes until our meeting on December the 7th? Dr. Miller.
And I should have said this, I just want to point out that the city clerk did her usual excellent job with the minutes, but I just feel duty-bound to actually review the council webcast to make sure that a couple of points get included that I think are important.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Any other discussion on the motion to hold? Mr. Bowles.
If that's the case, can we hold the videotape? Because tomorrow, this one's going to be on tomorrow, and the last one's going to be gone, so you won't be able to review it.
No, he's just talking about holding the written minutes.
But he just said he wants to review the tape and look at the minutes. Well, you won't be able to do that tomorrow.
Well, he'll be able to get with Teresa Lee, and I'm sure Teresa will make sure that we keep a copy for him to review.
Okay, great.
Is that okay, Teresa? Okay.
How about the tape now? Do you want me to leave it up?
Well, then I would say just leave it up for right now, then.
I can leave the old and put a new.
Yeah, until Dr. Miller's had an opportunity to review it. All right. Any other discussion on the motion to hold the minutes until December 7th? All in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye, and the motion to hold the minutes is adopted. Ladies and gentlemen, as we usually do, we try to start our meeting with public comment, which is your opportunity to address the city council on any issue. It doesn't have to be on tonight's agenda. If you have something that you would like to bring to our attention, all I ask that you do is you raise your hand, and I will call on you, and at that time, please come forward to the microphone in the podium and give us your name and your address so that we'll have a record of your attendance. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the city council on any issue? Mr. Melling.
First, gentlemen, you go first. Ladies first.
Ms. Finnegan.
It's a simple thing, but my address is wrong.
Okay.
Two more minutes.
What we'll need to do is we'll need to make a motion to amend the minutes at another meeting, but once they're approved by the council, then there's usually no changes made unless there's a factual error, and in this case, you've pointed out a factual error, and we'll get that corrected.
Okay, all right.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Finnegan? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming tonight. Is there anyone else in the audience? Mr. Melling. Anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Maliska? Mr. Bowles.
Several. First, let's go at the top, the dog order. Sort of my fault. I've been working with David, and it's ready, and I want to ask David to go ahead and turn it over to the committee, which would be the Public Safety Committee. But when this whole finagle, this crap hit a square in the face that we weren't ready for, I let that one go and just focused straight on the bigger problem. The lawsuit was not here, did not vote on that. The golf tournaments, never took it. I just want to make sure you understand that. I'm the new guy on the block, so, sorry, guys. I'm just taking the fifth on that one. Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for Ms. Maliska? I do. You mentioned that there's dogs running loose and people have been bitten. Are you talking about in Prattville? Would you please make me a list of those? I'd like to have the addresses, the names of the people, and I'd also like to know those that have been bitten since the ordinance has been adopted.
Since the ordinance has been adopted? No.
Oh, nothing's happened since it's been adopted?
Not the adoption. I know whether or not it has been killed, I don't know anybody who's been bitten.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm not talking about being for the ordinance. And if you read this ordinance, if David could now, should be able to tell us, this is not a valid document.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure, because you mentioned dogs running loose and people have been bitten. I wanted to make sure that that has not happened since the ordinance was adopted.
It was going on for the people who had.
And secondly, you mentioned that you've lived here off and on all your life. Were you here in 2005?
Yes.
That's when that lawsuit was filed?
Yes.
2005. Yes, ma'am. I just want to make sure you knew that.
I knew.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Maliska? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you coming. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the city council on any issue? Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Parrish? Mr. Wood.
Yes, Mr. Parrish, just out of curiosity, why did you choose to come to Prattville?
Well, we're all through the South. You know, we have three stores in the Montgomery area, we're in Clayton, Alexander City. Prattville's grown so quickly, and it's such a great place to live. I actually moved here from Texas. So the gentleman from California, I don't know what he's talking about. I love it here. I lived in Houston, so this is a blessing. It's just a great town. We see a lot of potential for our business, and we offer, you know, high-quality discount gas, so, you know, that'll be a benefit for all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Parrish? Mr. Bowles.
I'm sorry, is this the property located next to Prattville?
Yes.
Okay. Just so everybody understands, I own Prattville Carpet, and I own that property, so I will be abstaining from this vote tonight so that it doesn't look like so I will be abstaining from this vote tonight, so that it doesn't look like I have something to win from it. Thank you.
Dr. Miller?
I was just going to ask you, since you're new, new to Prattville, have you met your councilman yet?
No.
And do you know who your councilman is?
Uh...
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Parrish? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to address the City Council on any issue? Yes, sir. Mr. Flippo, I don't mean to cut you off, you're more than welcome to continue remarks. But I just want to let you know that the item on tonight's agenda is to set a public hearing for that particular establishment, so you will have ample opportunity to come back and address the City Council before a vote is taken on whether or not to grant that license. All we're doing tonight is just setting a public hearing.
I don't know the logic of the rule.
That's perfectly okay. As I said, I didn't mean to cut you off, you're more than welcome to continue, but I just wanted to make sure you knew. Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Flippo before he leaves? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to address the City Council on any issue? Mr. Hall? Mr. Hall, before you go any further, Chief, would you do me a favor? Would you see if that microphone's even on?
The other one's on.
The other one's on, but I want to know if the handheld's on.
The green one is on.
Okay, just want to make sure. All right, Mr. Hall, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hall, I'm Jim Hall, covering politics.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Thank you, Mr. Hall. I would, I would...
I don't have a comment for that.
Me either. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the City Council on any issue? Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes.
...passed, I guess, October 5th, and then recalled on October 19th. We are working a great deal, putting in a lot of time as the Finance Committee to try to obtain the information that we think is very important to follow through on that process. And the mayor and city staff have been really helpful in that regard. Some of you might not know, but the annual audit is underway and the auditors have been in the city complex as well. So, over the past week or so, they've kind of been competing for the time and attention of the city staff, and that's certainly a very high priority situation as well to get the audit underway. But that being said, they have been very forthcoming and helpful with getting the information that we need. That's an ongoing process, a lot of, you know, follow-up and clarification questions and things of that nature. I will tell you, one of the major things we're working to do is establish the target, the actual amount of revenue that we think is a worthy figure to use. And right now, we are sort of focusing on, at least as a starting point, what a three-year average of actual receipts for the various revenue, sources of revenue would be. And perhaps we'll introduce or add a modest growth factor to that. But that's a starting point to get a handle on how much money we have to work with as we move through the process. We are cataloging all the opportunities. When I talk about requests for information, not only from that, the mayor's office and city staff, but everything that we have had suggested, or we've thought of, or we've identified as a potential opportunity, we are cataloging those so we can kind of look at the whole picture. And I think everyone on the Finance Committee and the Council agrees that the department heads, Kenny's a good example, have lived this and breathed this for years. And they're going to be a very, very important source of information and advice as we go through this process. So, we're going to set up a series of meetings with them on an individual basis, with the department heads on an individual basis, to sort of pick their brains and get some ideas from them. Ongoing input from citizens is very important. A lot of us have received emails and suggestions, phone calls, et cetera, and I want to encourage folks to continue to do that. We hope to develop several scenarios that we can, as a Finance Committee, in turn, present to the entire Council for their consideration. And of course, that will lead to one or more work sessions where we'll really try to go through the process and ultimately finalize the budget. We are committed to keeping this process on track, and I am still hopeful that a second meeting in December might be a good target. We want to do this right. We are balancing this challenge with wanting to do it right with the realization that there are a lot of folks that, you know, community recipients of funding, city employees, a whole host of stakeholders who are going to need the information and the results as soon as we can get it finalized. So, we're trying to balance all of those pieces. But I just wanted to kind of give an update on where the Finance Committee, Councilman Argo, Councilman Renninger, and myself have kind of gotten to at this point in time. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Mr. Renninger?
I think Dr. Miller's son comments up quite nicely.
Mr. Bowles?
Mr. Fink?
Members of the Council, Mayor Byer, city staff, most of you know I'm usually not at a loss for words, but tonight I've written some down that I would like to read, because I want to make sure that I say exactly what I intended to say. Most of you know that on November the 1st, I accepted a senior management position with the Alabama Department of Post-Secondary Education. After working for more than 15 years in public education and five years in the energy field, I am blessed to receive this wonderful opportunity to work with Chancellor Frieda Hill, the dedicated staff of the state's community college system, and as well as being able to use my experience and my knowledge in both in government relations and in the communications fields. It's an answer to a prayer. With this new responsibility comes new expectations, and I want to diligently work on behalf of my employer. I know that as a city and as a council that we are certainly in challenging times. We currently are working on building and sustaining a solid conservative budget that funds city services, that ensures long-term financial stability, builds an adequate reserve, and properly rewards the exemplary service of our employees. You require and you deserve a leader who can focus his attention and the attentions of many others on that one common goal. Well, my new position requires the same of me. It's been a privilege to serve you as your council president for more than 10 years, and you've honored me with your votes, your confidence, your encouragement, and most importantly, your friendships. For that, I am most thankful. So, it's with a heavy heart that I ask you tonight to accept my resignation as president of the Prattville City Council. And with that, I'm going to turn the gavel over to the President pro tem, Tom Miller.
Well, John Lee, you just thought you were nervous.
Mr. Acting President.
Mr. Acting President, I want to make sure we're on the same page. If there's anything else that has to take place before that can actually take place.
The only thing y'all probably need to do is get elected. I think the resignation is sufficient. Y'all want to vote on it, but not if it's resignation, we just have to see a send when he resigns.
Was that, did that address your question? I'm not nearly as eloquent as you are, Councilman Argo. I would just say that it has been a privilege to work with you in the role of you being president and me first as a councilman and then pro tem over the past six years. And I want to say from the bottom of my heart that I appreciate your service to the council in that capacity and look forward to continuing to work with you on the city council. And I don't think words can adequately describe what sense of gratitude and appreciation that I have, not only for your service, but also for your friendship. I also would reiterate that I appreciate the confidence that my fellow councilmen placed in me when I was elected pro tem last term and the term that we're currently in. We will need to move towards electing a new pro tem, and in that regard, I would suggest that we look at doing that at our next regularly scheduled meeting. I think to do it immediately would shortchange each of us in terms of folks having time to let this settle in and kind of absorb what's transpired. And I would ask that anyone who is interested in that position, please contact me in that regard. So I guess with that, we'll move into the agenda. Resolution number one, to reappoint Terry Bowen to the Prattville Water Works Board. Councilman Fink, would you introduce this for us, please?
Sure. Whereas the appointment of Terry Bowen to the Prattville Water Works Board expired on September 30th, 2010, and whereas it is the desire of the Prattville City Council to fill this position in a timely manner in order to ensure the continuity of the water board's operation, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that Terry Bowen is hereby reappointed to a six-year term on the Prattville Water Works Board, with said term commencing immediately and expiring on September 30th, 2016. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Fink. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Any discussion on this resolution? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and resolution number one is passed. Resolution number two is to authorize the mayor to enter into a lease with Carla Bowles' properties to provide space for an employee healthcare clinic. Councilman Argo, would you introduce resolution number two?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas the city of Prattville authorized the mayor to execute an agreement with Care Here LLC at its September 21st, 2010 meeting for the provision of an employee healthcare clinic, and whereas the costs of the employee healthcare clinic are to be funded from the Employee Group Health Account, and whereas pursuant to such agreement, the city is required to provide space for the employee healthcare clinic, and whereas the city staff researched available space and recommends that the city enter into a lease with Carla Bowles' properties for approximately 1,250 square feet of space located at 1294 D East Main Street, Prattville, Alabama, 36066, for the annual rental rate of $10,800, and whereas the annual rent on such property would be $10,800 for up to three years, and whereas the property would need certain modifications to utilize it as an employee healthcare clinic, and whereas such modifications will be made with city staff. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver a lease agreement with Carla Bowles' properties in substantially the same form as the lease attached here too. City staff are hereby directed to make the modifications necessary to bring the property in accordance with agreement with Care Here, and the costs associated with such lease and modifications are hereby authorized to be paid from the Employee Group Health Account. The mayor and all other necessary and proper representatives of the city are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver or attest a signature required on any document reasonably necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Argo. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on resolution number two? Councilman Bowles.
I understand that this is going to save us a good bit of money in our health care program. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we know about how much it's going to save us?
Ms. Thrash, do you mind coming down?
The projected savings that Care Here anticipated on the analysis they gave us was $929,609 over a three-year period.
And that money would remain in the health care program, right?
Yes, it would be savings by claims not addressing our Blue Cross account would all stay in the employee group health.
And in turn, we can maybe pass that savings on to our employees down the road, maybe?
Well, hopefully.
Hopefully.
What we're trying to do is establish a larger reserve in our group health account so that we can maintain the level of benefits that we currently have, and so that we can, you know, this year we went up on rates for employees monthly. We also increased the copay. This was the third step in trying to keep our reserve at a high level so our benefits can remain as good as they are right now.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is that, okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. And again, y'all are going to have to bear with me. I was supposed to ask for a suspension of the rules as a point of order because we are expending funds here, and as you know, we're under continuing resolution in the absence of a budget. So I need to ask if I can have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Councilman Renninger.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Now, this is properly before us, but we've already discussed it. David, is it okay to go ahead and vote now? Okay. All in favor of resolution number two, signify by saying...
You have to vote on suspending the rules first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to vote on suspending the rules first.
Okay, we are voting now on suspending the rules. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the rules are suspended. This is now properly before us, and we can proceed to vote on the actual resolution. All in favor of resolution number two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and resolution number two passes. Resolution number three, to grant a retail beer off-premise only for Henry J. Hightouse, Vice President of Murphy Oil and USA Incorporated, doing business as Murphy Express 8542. Councilman Wood, can you introduce resolution number three?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas Henry J. Hightouse, Vice President of Murphy Oil USA Incorporated, doing business as Murphy Express 8542, has opened a business located at 2189 Cobb's Ford Road in Prattville, Alabama, which is a gas station and convenience store, and whereas the owner of said business has applied for an off-premise retail beer license, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of an off-premise retail beer license at the business located at 2189 Cobb's Ford Road, Prattville, Alabama, to Henry J. Hightouse, Vice President of Murphy Oil USA Incorporated, doing business as Murphy Express 8542. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Wood. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilman Renninger. Any discussion, comments, questions? Councilman Bowles.
I would like to go on record abstaining from this vote, please.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no other questions or comments, resolution number three, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and resolution number three passes. Resolution number four, to set a public hearing for a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license for Blue Iguana Incorporated, doing business as Blue Iguana. Councilman Gillespie, could you introduce resolution four?
Yes, sir, thank you. Whereas the city of Prattville requires a public hearing for all on-premise liquor license applications, whereas Blue Iguana Incorporated, DBA Blue Iguana, located at 1714 A East Main Street, Prattville, Alabama, 36066, has applied for a lounge retail liquor license Class 1, now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Prattville, hereby sets a public hearing for December 7th, 2010, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers of city hall for said license application. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Gillespie. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Resolution number four, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and resolution number four passes. Resolution number five, to set a public hearing for a lounge retail liquor Class 2 package store for Oro Swami, owner of Eagle Holding LLC, doing business as Bama Package Store Number 27. Councilman Wood, can you introduce the resolution five?
Whereas the city of Prattville adopted ordinance book 97, page 002 on January 21, 1997, for the purpose of setting public hearings to allow public comment for license, including lounge Class 2 package store located at 2565 A Cobb's Ford Road, Prattville, Alabama 36066, which is the type of license Oro Swami, owner of Eagle Holding LLC, doing business as Bama Package Store Number 27, has made application for, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby sets a public hearing on December 7th, 2010, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers and city hall for said license application. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Wood. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Renninger. Any comments, suggestions, questions? Okay, and Mr. Swami in the audience, if you would stand up. Thank you for being here tonight. All in favor of resolution number five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and resolution number five passes. Resolution number six, to authorize the mayor to make application for pre-disaster mitigation funds to lessen the impact of flooding in the Pine Creek floodplain. Councilman Renninger, can you introduce resolution six?
I can, and I will. Whereas Public Law 111-83, the Department of Homeland Security Appropriations Act 2010, set aside $500,000 in pre-disaster mitigation funds for the city of Prattville to lessen the adverse impacts of natural disasters to properties and residents of Prattville. And whereas the city has adopted the Otto County Mitigation Plan dated September 2009, which includes the goal to protect the citizens of Otto County as well as public and private property from the impacts of natural disasters, and plan objective to protect existing structures from damage caused by hazards through mitigation measures that seek to voluntarily acquire property located in flood hazard-prone areas. And whereas the city has determined that the acquisition of a high-risk areas in the Pine Creek floodplain is consistent with the mitigation plan and is eligible for funding under the PDM program administered by FEMA. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency has established an application deadline of December the 3rd, 2010, for projects funded by Public Law 111-83 appropriations, and whereas further city council action is required prior to execution of grant agreement and expenditure of funds, now therefore be it resolved by the city of Prattville as follows. Section 1, the city of Prattville submits a fiscal year 2010 pre-disaster mitigation program application to FEMA for acquisition and removal of high-risk structures in the Pine Creek floodplain. Section 2, the city of Prattville commits to providing the matching local funds required by the PDM program in cash or in-kind services. Section 3, that Jim Byer Jr., in his capacity of mayor, is hereby authorized and directed to submit said PDM application on behalf of the city of Prattville and sign all assurances and commitments as may be necessary to obtain the requested financial assistance. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Renninger. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Because this resolution references the provision of matching local funds, I'm going to ask that we suspend the rules out of an abundance of caution. Motion to suspend the rules, moved by Councilman Fink. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Councilman Argo.
Mr. President, members of the council, I think what we need to do is we need to go ahead and move on this. The reason being is obviously the date to apply is December 3rd, so we will not be back together prior to the December 3rd deadline. It does require us to commit matching local funds. It specifies in the grant that we set aside 25% for those matching funds, but it does not require us to designate them, put them in a separate account, and it doesn't require us to even expend them for 36 months. So I think we're safe to go ahead and authorize the city to make application. Once we get the funds, this will come back before us, and we'll have an opportunity to then decide if we want to spend those funds for that purpose. But if we don't at least apply for the grants, then we will not get that money. So I'm going to ask the council to please go ahead and adopt this tonight so that the city can go ahead and get the paperwork in the pipeline, and then it'll come back before us to determine if we ultimately are going to expend those funds. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Councilman Gillespie.
Yes, thank you. I also want to echo some of Councilman Argo, hard to say that, but also besides in cash, there's also an in-kind services. So there's a great possibility that our portion of it will not even be that same, that total amount as far as cash. But the in-kind service is what I'm real keen on. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Councilman Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joel, you may have to answer this for me, so will you come up? The program application itself, total amount, is it cut and dry, specific, $500,000, or we won't know until we actually make an application for the grant?
No, so this is money that was set aside under this usually competitive program. In public law reference from resolution, several communities throughout the United States were proceeding set asides, and Prattville is one of those. So that $500,000 is set.
Okay.
The law requires that the community meet all the other requirements of the program, including application and meeting the usual federal assurances. But if we do that, those funds are assured.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking this question, it's set aside, so you say $500,000, so there's no chance that it's going to come back $750,000 to $800,000?
No, sir, but that's, there's no chance of retaining additional funds, $500,000.
Thank you. Councilman Bowles.
I have two questions. Joel, you might want to answer one of these first. Why was it this brought to us so late that we have to vote on it tonight? That needs to come to a stop. This should have been on to us two weeks ago, so we'd have time to think about this, to digest it, and then vote on it, and not be pressed up against the wall.
I understand concerns about that. This idea was presented in the planning department's budget, and was adopted as part of the budget. Once the budget was rescinded, then we had to take this type of action to get y'all to agree. It was presented to y'all as part of our original ambition, but it may...
But you knew the budget was rescinded over a month ago. This should have...
We're just trying to make sure you get your process and how you're going to receive that. I believe the conversations were held with members of the Finance Committee to determine how to handle that, so. And I can't really answer exactly why tonight, but this is not a, it's not a secret. We've known what happens when we presented it to you in the budget as we normally would have. It's just essentially the budget is what's required, is required, just to come back before you.
And I do understand that, but what I'm asking you, in the future, if something needs to be done that week, it needs to be to us within a month prior. So the rest of the council that's not privy to this information, that's not on the Finance Committee, will have time to digest and understand what's going on here. Okay?
I'm glad to do that. We don't have the ability to put things on here, so we're... We don't have the ability to put things on here, so we're council members.
Second question is going to be Rod. Where are we going to get 250,000 dollars from? What count? Where's that coming from? Is it 250,000 or 25,000?
One hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, 125,000. Where are we going to get that money from? And can we touch it if we need to use it?
We just have to designate, we basically are committing 125,000 dollars. We don't have to set it aside. We don't have to remove it from the funds we have. And we have three years to complete the project, so it's going to take some time to get through the process to actually have it awarded, so it'll be a period of several, several months before that, thirty-six months even begins to run. And then, once it is awarded, we'll have thirty-six months to complete the project and provide either in-kind services or cash.
Okay, thank you.
Satisfactory. Okay. Any other questions, comments on resolution number six?
Motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
And we're voting on it, right? Yeah, it's before us, I'm sorry. Y'all bear with me, but that discussion was after the motion to suspend the rules, so now we're voting on that motion to, we're voting to suspend the rules. Okay. I was supposed to do that first, right? Again. Okay. All right, we are voting on the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Gillespie. Okay. Moved by Councilman Wood, seconded by Councilman Gillespie. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I thought we were taking a, suspending those rules. We haven't? Okay, I just want.
The chief had it before.
Okay.
Right, someone has already moved and seconded. That's what I'm getting at. We just need to vote on it.
Okay, so we're now voting on it. Okay, we're voting on the suspension of the rules, that motion. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and the rules are suspended. Resolution number six is now properly before us. We've already had the discussion, so we can move to the vote. All in favor of resolution number six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye and resolution number six is finally passed. Resolution number seven, to authorize the expenditure of funds for city staff to attend the integrated emergency management course. Councilman Argo, can you introduce resolution seven?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the city of Prattville, Otaga County, the Otaga County Board of Education, and other local entities critical to emergency response, were selected to attend the integrated emergency management course at the National Emergency Training Center in Emmitsburg, Maryland, from January ten through thirteen, two thousand and eleven. And whereas the city will be reimbursed for the cost of travel to and from the National Emergency Training Center, and lodging will be provided at no charge to the city. And whereas the only cost of the city will be for meal cards and reimbursable incidental expenses for employees of the city attending such training. And whereas such training will enhance the coordinated response in the city in the event of an emergency. And whereas up to thirty-four city employees will attend such training, and the cost of a meal card for the duration of the class is approximately 110 dollars per employee. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the city of Prattville, that up to 5,000 dollars is approved and authorized to be expended from the general fund for the meal cards and incidental reimbursable expenses associated with the integrated emergency management course. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Argo. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. It's a point of order because this resolution expends funds. It will require suspending the rules if we're going to consider it tonight, otherwise it automatically holds.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Wood moves to suspend the rules. Councilman Argo is seconded. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of suspending the rules, resolution seven, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and the rules are suspended. Now, resolution seven is properly before us. Any discussion, comments, questions?
Yes.
Councilman Reneger.
Mr. Chair, in light of some information that just came to me about four thirty yesterday afternoon, I feel that we need to hold this till our regular, next regular council meeting and give the council a chance to discuss the possible expenditures other than what's stated here in this particular resolution. And after discussing it, we may want to bring forward a substantive resolution to cover more of the details on that, so I'm moving to hold to our next regular meeting.
Okay, and do I take other discussion or get a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion to hold resolution number seven by Councilman Reneger, seconded by Councilman, I'm sorry, resolution eight. Motion to, all right, thank you. Resolution to hold, motion to hold resolution seven by Councilman Reneger, seconded by Councilman Wood. All in favor of the motion to hold resolution seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and resolution seven is held till our next regularly scheduled meeting. Resolution eight, authorize four fire department personnel to attend EMT basic courses in the promotion of one service maintenance worker in the sanitation department to equipment operator, truck driver. Councilman Reneger, can you introduce resolution eight?
Yes, sir. Whereas four trainees employed by the city of Prattville Fire Department recently completed training at the Alamo Fire College and earned their certification as firefighters. And whereas the city of Prattville requires all firefighters to earn and maintain EMT basic certification. Whereas the EMT course begins in January 2011 at an approximate cost of 750 dollars per student. And whereas the sanitation department of the city of Prattville currently has two open equipment operator, truck driver positions. And whereas promotion to equipment operator requires the earning of a CDL, it's a CDL driver license. Whereas the service maintenance worker currently employed with the city recently earned his CDL. And whereas promoting such service maintenance worker to equipment operator would allow for the more efficient use of sanitation department personnel without adding any additional personnel at a total annual cost of 3,806 dollars and forty cents. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that up to 3,000 dollars is hereby authorized to be expended from the general fund for EMT basic courses for four fire department personnel and that the promotion of one service maintenance worker in the sanitation department to equipment operator are hereby approved. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Reneger. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. As a point of order because this resolution expends funds, it'll be necessary to suspend the rules if we're going to pass it tonight. Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Argo. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Reneger. The motion to suspend the rules is before us. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules on resolution eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and resolution eight is now properly before us. Okay, any discussion on resolution eight? Councilman Gillespie.
Yes, sir, thank you. It's not actually a discussion, but just a comment, I'd like to commend the city employee who took it on his own to go above and beyond the duty and get the CDL and just want to commend him, whoever it might be, he or she.
And Lisa, who is that?
Andre Jackson.
Andre Jackson. Okay, for the minutes, that will be good. Any other comments, questions on resolution eight? All in favor of resolution eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and resolution number eight passes. Gentlemen, we have one resolution from the floor. To authorize the mayor to sign a release involving Pendlebrook subdivision. Councilman Argo, would you introduce this resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the owners of Pendlebrook subdivision failed to complete certain improvements within the subdivision. And whereas Bank Trust is the owner of the first mortgage of the property. And whereas Bank Trust desires to be absolved of liability related to the development of the subdivision. And whereas Bank Trust is willing to pay to the city of Prattville the sum of 45,000 dollars in return for the release of liability as it relates to the development of the subdivision. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign a release involving Pendlebrook subdivision. The mayor and all other necessary and proper representatives of the city are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver or attest a signature required on any document reasonable necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Argo. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Reneger. Any questions, comments?
By point of order, it has to be held.
Oh, I'm sorry. By point of order, because it did not appear on tonight's agenda, it would be necessary to suspend the rules if we're going to consider this tonight, otherwise it.
So moved.
Automatically holds. Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Argo, seconded by Councilman Wood. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Okay, hearing none, we will now vote on the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The chair votes aye and the rules are suspended and this resolution is now properly before us. Any discussion on the resolution itself?
Mr. President.
Councilman Argo.
If Mr. McDowell would please come to the podium. This is in my district. This has been a, an issue with many, many residents of my district, and Mr. McDowell has been meeting with these individuals, and I'd like for him to just briefly tell the council what you've already told us individually, but tell us collectively why this is important.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Any other questions? Councilman Wood.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. McDowell, either Joel, maybe you can tell, has this particular subdivision already been accepted by the city?
No, sir.
Okay, and it will not be accepted until these particular improvements have been done with the money that we will receive from Bank Trust. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye and this resolution passes. Councilman Gillespie.
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry. It's time to go down to closing comments, I guess.
Time to go down, isn't it? Yes, sir.
Closing comments.
Mr. Chairman, I want to remind the city council, Mr. Bowles in particular, that as we move into this new change with council president Miller, the city staff's going to give the council president leeway in, because he's learning his role, and I would appreciate if you would give the city staff some leeway, because we don't have a budget and the city staff's working diligently to make sure that the city council has everything they need. And Mr. Duke had this item in his budget, and it was to you guys, and this, we were up against a deadline. I appreciate your comments. I think they should be directed towards me, but I do appreciate your comments. With that, Councilor Argo, you know, for a team to be successful, and especially a city, there's, you gotta have, you gotta have a mayor, you gotta have a city council. They gotta work together. And one of the reasons this city has been successful, and one of the reasons Mr. Melling enjoys living here, and Mr. Parrish enjoys living here, and the other thousands of people enjoy living here that live here, is because over the last decade, we've had an excellent team. And in much credit, much credit needs to be given to the city council and to the leadership. And Mr. Argo, over the last decade, we have certainly had our share of agreements, we've certainly had our fair share of disagreements. Thankfully, most of those disagreements have been behind closed doors, because when you disagree behind closed doors, you move your city forward. When you disagree out here, you don't have to look far to see other cities that stagnate. But on behalf of the citizens of a grateful community, I want to thank you for your service over this last decade. I know it has been trying. You have set an extremely high bar for council president Miller to step into. I'm sure he can achieve it, but I know of, you've just had a high bar in professionalism, high bar in parliamentary procedure, a high bar in character and class running the city council. For that, the citizens and I will give you a round of applause. And Dr. Miller, I am so pleased to welcome you as the president of the city council. And as I say, said about my friend Dean Argo, cities are successful because of partnership. They're not successful because of one individual. I appreciate your willingness to serve as president of the city council, the legislative body of the city. I pledge to you that I will work with you in a forthright manner. I look forward to sitting down over the next day or two, maybe before Thanksgiving. I know you sometimes slip out of town at Thanksgiving, but I look forward to sitting down with you and having an honest, frank, open discussion about the ways we can continue to move our city forward. I look forward to sitting down here a little bit lower than you and watching you learn and watching you grow in your role as council president. I wish you tremendous success, and I hope that each of you have a wonderful Thanksgiving, wonderful Thanksgiving season. This is the greatest season, and truly, I hope people will take a breath and reflect on the things that are, that are most important to you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Gillespie.
Yes, sir, thank you. One thing I'd like for the council to consider, changing some of our bylaws in the near future, to have our agenda placed on the city website for public viewing by 5:00 PM on the Friday before the council meeting, and to also show dollar amounts in the header. I'll be discussing that with the rest of the councilors in the next week or so, but please consider that over our Thanksgiving holiday. And I do want to thank Councilor Argo. There again, it's hard to say, but you've taught me a lot. I've enjoyed sitting up here and watching you behind the big mic, and I'm going to enjoy Dr. Miller being behind the big mic now, and both of you guys and the whole council as a whole has helped me grow here. The citizens have helped me grow up here, and I feel like we can move forward with the, we've been in very trying economic and political waters lately, and I feel like that we're coming together as a team and hope that we can move forward and take this city where it needs to go. But with that said, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you, Councilman Gillespie. Councilman Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You've done an excellent job your first night. Real good. First of all, public safety members, be aware again that I would like to call a public safety committee meeting, so as soon after this meeting, will you please get with me before you three guys, that will be Councilman Fink and Councilman Miller. To past president Argo, I want to first congratulate you on your new job. That's a blessing, and I know some of the trying times that you were going through, and everybody, you know, wants to move forward. So congratulations there. Thank you for the service you've done. I can relate to that on a small level. I've kind of sat in those shoes for a while, and I have been blessed to serve as president and president pro temp, so I can. So I congratulate you now, Dr. Miller, in, in that capacity as president. And I most certainly look forward to one of you gentlemen serving as president pro tem. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Councilman Argo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin on my remarks, I would like to take notice of former councilmembers Hall and Carter here tonight. And I appreciate both of their services. And had an opportunity to serve with both of them as council president and with Councilman Hall as, as council member from District Three. I also want to take notice of our state representative, Paul Beckman, in the back of the room. Mr. Beckman, congratulations again on your election. We look forward to working with you over the next quadrennium. Know that you've got exciting things ahead for you as well as you meet your colleagues and have an opportunity to mull over a special session in just a few weeks. So I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that Mr. Beckman was here. I do want to say to the council, I did not want to put it in my remarks at the beginning because I didn't want to belabor the point, and I didn't want us to have to, to wait any further for city business. But I do want to tell the members of the council how much I, I am privileged to have been able to serve as council president. When you serve in a leadership capacity, often you have an opportunity to be involved a little bit more than, than the rest of the council. And, and so you have an added responsibility of, of making sure that, that you're fair and that you're even-handed. And, and I've attempted to do that. And I know that there have been times where, serving as council president, that my frustration showed through. And, and I, I've apologized for that. But I do hope that the members of the council and city staff and those of you that routinely come to council meetings and have seen me at my worst, how much I, I appreciate your patience and understanding. And, and this new opportunity for me, again, is an answer to a prayer. The good Lord has blessed me in, in many, many ways. But one of the ways that he has blessed me is the opportunity to sit up here with this gentleman and serve with this mayor. And, and I look forward to a, to the next two years to see how this city's going to move forward. Dr. Miller has been able to talk to us the last couple of weeks about the finance committee and about how we're progressing on the budget. I truly believe that the, that the finance committee is approaching this with the best attitude. And that is, yes, we're facing challenging times, but what a wonderful opportunity it is for us to reanalyze and rethink the way that we budget and the way that we have, that we have appropriated money and, and provided services to the citizens. It's a great opportunity for us to do that. And I truly do believe that the citizens and the staff and the mayor and the rest of this council are going to be very proud of the work product that the finance committee will turn over. I do know that the council is going to be ultimately and going to be intensely involved once we're able to bring a recommendation to the council to making sure that what's ultimately adopted is a work product of all of us and not just a few. And finally, to Dr. Miller, I want to say that passing the gavel to you is one of the hardest things that I've ever had to do. Not because of you personally, but because sitting in that chair has been a privilege and an honor. And I thank each one of you for giving me that opportunity. And I've enjoyed the last 10 years. But as Mr. Gillespie said, I look forward to sitting over here with the little mike and letting you have the big mike for a while. But gentlemen, thank you again. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Councilman Renninger.
I'm a man of few words. I'm just going to say, Dean, you've been a very close and dear friend of mine for 14 years. I treasure that friendship. You have led us in a very positive direction. I can't think of anyone better to lead us as council president. But I'm looking forward to seeing Dr. Miller try. Y'all have a blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Councilman Renninger. Councilman Bowles.
Well, I want to start off by saying, it's hard for me not to say Paul. But Representative Beckman, congratulations on your win. I look forward to your leadership in the near future. I look forward to working with you very closely over the next four, eight, 20 years, however long you choose to be in there and the people choose to have you in there. Congratulations, and I really appreciate the work you put in on that campaign. Second, Dean, thank you for the last two years. You've taught me a lot. I know we butt heads and don't see eye to eye on everything. But I do appreciate the way you run the meetings. You're superb at your speech and the way you run things. Thank you for your leadership. Dr. Miller, president, you did a wonderful job tonight. Thank the Lord it wasn't me sitting in that chair. We'd still be here for three more hours. Thank you for your, and I'm looking forward to working with you side by side, trying to get us out of this mess. So thank you so much. And last but not least, Joe, I must apologize. I might have handled that a little wrong. I do challenge all the department heads to work a little harder. I realize that you're not under good leadership, or this stuff wouldn't happen. So the ball's in your court. Until the next two years, y'all are going to have to step up to the plate. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Councilman Bowles. Councilman Fink.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you, Tom. Happy Thanksgiving.
I guess one of the privileges of being in this seat is you get to vote last and you get to make the last closing comments. But I do want to make just a couple of comments. One, Councilman Gillespie, your suggestion that we look at the timing of the posting of the agenda, be it draft or final, and including some monetary amounts in the titles is, I think, one of several things that we need to look at. I think it's, it's going to be an opportune time to sort of regroup and add up all those sorts of things. And that may be one of a dozen, or one of five, or one of three. But I, I would thank you for bringing that forward so that we can look at whether or not there are additional things that we might want to revisit in terms of how we conduct our business as a council. I am going to have to get used to sitting in this chair. You know, I attend the same church as Councilman Renninger, and I see him on the finance committee. And same thing with you, Councilman Argo. But I really enjoyed sitting beside Councilman Wood these years and sort of being the benefactor of his wisdom and, and advice through the years. And I am going to continue to do that. It just won't be as easy, Willie, because I've been switched. So, but I do want to, to tell you that I, I value your wisdom and, and counsel through the years. And I'll work on, on that. The other thing is that when I look across the council, I think each and every one of you, just like me, brings your own approach to things, your personality and your values and your beliefs. And we do disagree from time to time. But I think it's incredibly important that we continue to work together and respect each other's differences and differing, differing views on different matters. And that certainly is what I'm seeing play out thus far with our work on the task of revising the budget. And I hope that with all of us together, we can continue in that, that spirit and that vein. Likewise, as the council interacts with the mayor and city staff, I, I think we're equally committed, mayor, to having a productive partnership in terms of moving the city forward. And I commit certainly myself, and I believe I speak on behalf of the rest of the council in that regard. So I guess, having said that, can I hear a motion to adjourn?